So we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. The Pledge of Allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, and limited in justice. Thank you all very much. And I'm sorry, I'm on to the next one. We'll start with the interviews for the Board of Police Commissioners. So thank you for being here. So we usually just do it in the order that they were received. So we'll start with Bill Middleton, then go to John. So Bill, you wanna come up here? If you don't, yeah, either way, whatever your mark on business or your testifying.
Okay. Maybe I should sit over there.
So thank you. And then, Ben, do you want to start your question? And now, we can introduce ourselves again.
We'd like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board commissioner in another volunteer capacity. In responding, please expand on what roles you played and what you've had.
Okay. See, many years ago, for many years, I was on the chair or on the board of the Riverfront Children's Center. I was variously treasurer and chairman of the board at the James Merrill House for about 20 years, where I was treasurer and co-chair of the old Mystic Marches Association, where I was treasurer and president currently on the James Merrill House Foundation, the seat board a number of years ago. So I think that's mostly the best. Oh, the estate and tax funding council in Connecticut, I was the treasurer and president.
Sure. I'm Debbie Downey. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Board of Police Commissioners?
Really to sort of serve as conduit between the public and the police force.
And then, could you describe any relevant professional experience as well as what specific skill set you think you bring to that commission?
Well, I think, you know, some part of the role is dealing with personnel and human resources matters. I have 150 employees, so I've dealt with a lot of those. And also have worked with the police, actually, over the years on a number of sort of traffic issues and road patterns, that kind of thing.
Okay. Do you want to go first?
Oh, sure. What positive impact do you hope to see as your legacy five years from now?
On the commission, I think just to improve that relation, relationship between the police and the public, I think is a very important one. And, you know, the general public's, you know, perception of the police in general.
Do you guys have any follow-up questions?
No, I guess I would ask what, to expand on that fourth question of the improvement relationship between the public and the police. What do you see as areas to improve?
You know, I think just sort of generally, people can have sort of a negative view of the police, but it's sort of a necessary function. I think our police department does a very good job with community relations, but, you know, always wins.
Do you have any questions?
Just one other quick question. Have you attended police commission meetings?
Oh, yeah. Many.
We will say anything. Bill put in his application, you might remember this, right after, we did the interviews last year for the position, so if there's any, he's been calling pretty frequently.
Yeah, I've attended a number for planning and zoning commission applications and things like that. Certainly familiar with the process.
Thank you very much. We should have said this at the beginning, you don't hold it against you. If you leave afterwards, we won't make a decision tonight, it'll be at our next meeting, which will be in two weeks.
In two.
Yes. Thank you all very much. John?
We expect you to memorize what's written.
And yet, if you don't know John, it's just entering.
Exactly. We would like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board commissioner or another volunteer capacity. In responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
Okay. In the town of Stoneington, I was on the zoning board of appeals for two terms. I was elected to the park commission. I served for two terms, Mystic Park Commission. And I was elected to the fire district, Mystic Fire District Executive Committee, and served three terms as chairman. Basically, the function of the fire district is very similar to the function of the police commission. So I have, it's firemen, of course, instead of, but they're still chiefs and that sort of thing.
Yeah. Sure. Yes, John, I'm Debbie Downey. And I'll ask you a question. Change the page. I should know these by heart. What's your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Board of Police Commissioners?
Board of Police Commissioner governs the police department. It's not quite that simple, but that's essentially what it is.
Thank you. Hi, Danielle. How are you? So you just wanna describe any professional, any professional experience and any specific skill set you think you bring to a commission?
The skill set would be related to the Mystic Fire District. It's, I don't know the budget of the police department right offhand, but we were dealing with basically a $2 to $3 million budget. We created the budget, we managed the department, we set the policy, disciplined, replaced chiefs, two chiefs, two deputies. So it's very similar.
Oh, yeah. So what positive impact do you hope to see as your legacy five years from now?
To leave it better than I found it. It's a great police department. Hopefully, I can do well by it.
Thank you. Do you have any follow-up questions? Have you attended police commission meetings?
I have not.
Okay.
I've read minutes. I follow the minutes, but...
Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you both very much. And just a follow-up.
Thank you. I'll take my leave.
Oh, yes, of course, definitely. So next up, we have our zoning board of appeals interview. And Stephen, you, why, first, if you wanna take the stand? Yeah, you could, yeah, you could mix it up. Yeah, David with our interview.
Evening.
Good evening. Basically, the same questions, but it's slightly different. Maybe we'll go, let's start, you wanna start?
Sure.
We'll change the order.
Sort of a big idea of, they aren't in a different order. So we would like to know what pertinent experience you have serving on a board, commission, or in another volunteer capacity. And in responding, please expand on what roles you played and what impact you had.
Sure. Well, first, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to meet with you again and interview with you. I interviewed with you a few years ago for another position, and you said if things didn't work out for that, you'd come back. Well, I followed your advice. I think you've all received my CV. I'm not gonna repeat everything that's in there, but obviously, I've spent about 40 years in public service in multiple communities, including land use. I think, as you saw, chaired planning and zoning commissions in two towns, also served on a weapons commission. And land use is something that actually goes back to my days in law school when I first started volunteering. So I think that that's most pertinent and most helpful when you have experience in that.
Wow, that's nice. Thank you. Do you want to do that?
Sure. What is your opinion of the responsibilities and primary function of the Board of Police Commissioners?
I don't know if my opinion matters, but state statute and regulations spell it out. The duties and responsibilities are to hear any kind of appeals or administrative decisions by the zoning enforcement officer, and also to hear variance applications, which probably takes up most of the time. And then, there's a third duty that's kind of obscure that most people don't realize, which has to do with the permits for automobile dealers and repair shops. By statute and by the zoning regulations, that has to be a requirement of zoning for the vehicles. Did you get a lot of those, Ben, when you served in the ZB?
Very few. And as an aside, I believe that that has been changed.
It's still, it's still in the current zoning regulations.
Okay. Maybe in phase two. I don't know if it's still in the state.
It's still in state statute. I actually looked it up today.
I couldn't be wrong. There was some discussion on it anyway. I digress. No, we didn't get too mad at that.
But it's a limited jurisdiction. It's a statutory board. You've gotta follow that.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. You only have three, so you got up here, you're the last.
You can ask me as many as you want.
No, you did your own right. Could you describe any relevant professional experience and any specific skill set? You kind of already touched on the professional, but if you wanna add to it or just highlight any specific skill?
Sure. Contractor, what many people think, they don't think you have too many attorneys on a land use agency. They think that you really need to make sure you follow the law, both case law and statutes. I've spent 38 years practicing in the state of Connecticut, including land use, appearing before ZBAs, planning and zoning commissions, weapons commissions, both representing applicants and representing neighbors opposed to proposals. So I think I've got a pretty good feel for it in a professional basis. You know, what's the rest of the questions?
Skill set, yeah.
Skill set, yeah. I mean, the other thing I would point out is that I've always worked in a collaborative way. Whenever I've served on any kind of board, and whether I'm in a leadership position or not, I try to build consensus. I think that's the most important thing. Your fourth question, I don't wanna create a legacy. Creating, you know, you don't wanna create law when you're on a land, local land use. You wanna avoid going court. And that's the, I think it's a great thing about having attorneys on board, is that you can find a way to avoid going court.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other questions or suggestions?
No.
Do you have any questions?
No. You know, I do have one question, since you were, we were both at the ZBA meeting last night, I couldn't stay. I was just wondering if you see, without getting too specific, I mean, do you see areas for improvement on a board? What can you tell us about the board that you think we should be aware of?
I think they did a fine job last night. I think they were respectful of the public, allowed the public to speak. That's, you know, you've got, your applicant presents their case, and they gave full opportunity for the public to speak. They explained things to the public well, I think. Some members of the public wanted to get into a little bit of a back and forth and debate, and that's not the position of the board. And the board did say that's not what we're here to do. And they were pretty clear on their decision-making process, and it was open and transparent. So I think we've got a good board right now.
Very experienced staff, too.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. So similar to Board Commissioners, we should be making decisions at our next meeting, so like two weeks, but you don't have to be here. You're welcome to be, but you don't have to be, and we will definitely, you know. But thank you very much. Thank you for being willing to serve, both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, sir.
All right. Now, we'll go to the comments from the public. Jesse, you wanna come up or just say your name for the record?
I'm Jesse.
Okay, just say your name for the record.
I'm Jesse Dixon, downtown. My comments have to do with the...
Jesse, just say your name for the record.
My name is Jesse Dix. I live at H School Street in Stoneington, Beryl. My comments have to do with the parking situation in Mystic. I was at the meeting several months ago when paid parking was approved, but no plan was presented with that. And apparently, the plan that was presented a couple days ago, and I was, I was not at that meeting, apparently that was rejected. Controversial, let's put it that way. It seems to me the solution to the problem is right in front of our nose, and it's the Mystic Seat Port. I think it's the Seat Port Marina Parking Lot, the parking area there that has been leveled from the fire. It's a perfect spot for a parking spot, for a parking lot. It's something that I'm sure to be fairly, I'm sure you must have discussed this already. I would think you'd try to work out something with the owner of the property. Currently, it's not doing anything for him. Any attempt to develop it in the past has been rejected or withdrawn. So it seems to me that that would be a perfect spot for a public parking lot, whether you can make it paid or not. Personally, I think it should be free. It's something that could be developed into a multi-level parking garage. So it's not clear to me why that's not being pursued. In situations like this, and other towns I've been involved in, they say, well, if we don't own it, we can't lease it. They have all these reasons why they can't do it. I would say the answer is figure out how to do it, because that's the most logical spot to have public parking for Mystic. It would solve everybody's problem, whether it be the residents, whether it be the people who work in the shops and the restaurants, or visitors. I mean, it's a solution sitting right under your nose. Why not pursue it somehow or other? Make it happen. That's my comment.
Thanks, Jesse. And you stick around, we're gonna talk more about parking later, but I'm happy to send you that, and you'll follow up with more on that. But thank you. Do you have any other public comments? Thank you very much. And thank you for all the work you did with our Harbor Management Commission. Could I get a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of September 25th, 2024?
So I did watch the...
Yeah, I saw it.
Thank you.
Any discussions? Any call-ups in favor? I have motion carries. Well, thanks, Stacy, who's probably stressing right now, not being at the meeting. So of our correspondence, we did get an application from Nathan Phelps for the Flood Prevention, Planning, Resilience, and Erosion Control Board. And you guys can tell me now, or maybe with Stacy, if you wanna think about it more normally, what we would do with a board like this, when there's an open seat and there's no one else submitting, they would talk with the first selectman, and then they would also talk with the chair of that commission, and then we'd just come forward back with it as a potential appointment. But obviously, do you think we should actually formally interview them? Again, that's not past practice, but it's always up for discussion. We've already changed this once.
I know he was recommended by, remember, that when I was at the last meeting, that was brought up, so.
I would say if we have a, I think if we make one of those names forward, I'm going to move on to it.
I think we can't yet. I think it has to go in the correspondence first. Yeah. Or we've already done it. Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So then, okay, big discussion. The appointments, so under planning and zoning commission, wonderful, we have three applicants. In the past, we were hard not finding anybody, but more recently, we've had more interest. We have, it's for an alternate seat, as you guys know, for sharing for the public. We have David, who had also interviewed for ZBA, Andy, just for PCC, and then John for just PCC. And so I think, Ben or Debbie, you guys wanna start?
Yeah, I'm gonna start. I would nominate John Crew for the alternate position, as we discussed the last time when we made the other appointment. I feel that at this time, it's really important we get some experience with all that's going on with planning and zoning between the regulation rewrite and the POCD coming up. John not only has experience in two terms on planning and zoning and also acting as chair, but he worked, actually was around and worked on two previous planning and confirmation development, as far as the zoning regulation rewrite. He served, I believe, two full terms and probably more as an alternate on the ZBA, which again, I wanna reiterate that I think that's really not quite a prerequisite, but really important experience to consider at this time. Andrew Tovin, I know him, I like him, I think he's a great guy and he's smart, and I really appreciate the fact that he's interested in doing this. I think, you know, I'd rather see him start on the ZBA, frankly. I think that ZBA is the best place to get the experience. Dave Resendez, I'd be perfectly happy with him. He's got a lot of experience coming from ZBA. But again, I think John, just because of the experience with the POCD and his continued involvement, I just think he's the best choice.
So while, and I know it's in the past, you know, I think John has a lot of experience. I've been going back and forth on this and talking to a lot of people, and lately, I've been leaning towards Dave. I think he also has a lot of great experience and is bringing a little bit of a different perspective to it with all this ZBA experience. So while I'd be happy with either, I was gonna recommend Dave. I think that Andrew, again, seems like a very interesting person, but I think perhaps there might be a different place where his skill set might work better, so.
I have one thing before you go to see the sponsor at all. For John, there's one more thing I wanted to say. I think that we're coming up to a point where leadership is gonna be important. I don't know, Chuck's gonna stay around as, continue as chairman, and then hopefully for his full term, if the rest of the board will have him. But I think that we need to look at the membership. We're gonna lose him in next year. She's been around for a long time. We're gonna be losing, uh, we're gonna lose him. I think that we need, we need to look at possible leadership. John hadn't been chair before. I think he'd be good trust me. So that would all be, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's fine. I was also gonna go.
And I would add, as far as David goes, and I've got a lot of experience working with David, he was great on ZBA. For all the years he was on, he never wanted to be chair. He was on for a long time and never took the chairmanship. That was a good question. That would be the only...
Yeah, my only thought on him too was the fact that now he's retired when John's quit busy.
Yeah.
So I was, that kind of tipped, I had heard from several people who also had recommended David, so I was kind of kicking that into my comments, too. And I liked John, and I think he'd be fine, but I was just...
You know, I shouldn't comment on this, I love the bipartisan flip that you guys did, or if you don't know, he's a Democrat, he just nominated a Republican, and you're a Republican, now you're a Democrat. Look at it, it's a lie in the world in Stoneington. I like that, Jesse, coming to it, just qualifications and perspective. That was very helpful. Sorry, I couldn't help but...
You know, again, I've been happy with either, so I think that either of those two would be a good...
No, I was struggling with this, and you both know zoning more. I was leaning towards David for a few different reasons, but also partially do like to look at the big picture and all of our boards and the fact that we, not to do a spoiler alert for the next meeting, but the fact that we had Stephen interview, he's so qualified for ZBA. I don't wanna lose David. I'm always concerned about people might be interested in a moment of time in serving, but keeping them motivated, you remember from past Board of Police Commissioners, sometimes we'd have 10 people interviewing, and other times it's one or two. So I don't wanna take for granted that David would still be interested if we turned him down for both boards. So that's a concern. I also thought, I took into account what you said last time about ZBA being important and good training ground, and he had that over Andy, even though I thought Andy did a terrific job. I also feel like last time, when we interviewed with John and Elisa, it was a, they both brought really great skills, but in my mind, slightly similar skills in terms of that past perspective and leadership ability, and we put Elisa on. So I would like, I think I'd like to go with David on my side, just because I think it's good to get some new perspective, but that has good experience.
I, that was really what was driving me as well, because I think John and Elisa had very similar experience and have worked together and been on at the same time in the past. And, you know, and I did really want someone, and still want someone with the past experience, and I like that David brings that ZBA past experience as well, but, you know, again...
Yeah, and I thought Andy was wonderful, and I would like to reach out to him. Again, maybe he only is interested in planning and zoning, but if he is interested, he talked a few times about, like, his social work background and some of the social service areas. So I do think between, like, your commission on aging or housing or...
Yeah.
He could be, so again, maybe he wanted this specifically, but I think he could at least potentially interest him in giving back in other ways. So maybe I'll make a motion to appoint David Resendez as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Could I get a second?
Sure.
All of those in favor? And I will say, I do give, and we'll give everybody my slurs, but John a lot of credit for it's not often he finds somebody who comes in and is still willing to be an alternate after being a chairman, and that, I think, says a lot about a person. So we'll definitely really thank him for that.
And are there openings on POCD?
Because we haven't done it yet.
Oh, well, I was thinking...
The POCD Implementation Committee...
There is no...
Yes, there would be.
I was wondering if he'd like to consider that.
But also, planning and zoning, appoint a subcommittee for the POCD writing, he could be really good on that.
Yeah, and I know, that's, I was thinking, I'd love to see him tied into the POCD, because he does have that experience, which...
It's a really good idea. Yeah, it's a really good idea. He seems very interested in that. So back to zoning board, who feels? Could I get a motion to reappoint Anthony Caporal?
Caporal.
Thank you. As a regular member, and Jim Kating and Mark Bancroft as alternate members of the zoning Board of Appeals.
So moved.
Second.
Second for discussion.
All right.
Yeah. I also had, we didn't have any correspondence from the members themselves. All we had was a memorandum from Stacy to herself stating that Jim Kating requested to be moved from regular member to an alternate, and Anthony Caporal requested being moved from alternate to a regular, and a second memo showing that Mark Bancroft requested reappointment as an alternate on the ZBA. I called Mark to find out if he was interested in being a regular member, which he said he was, and we never asked him. Further found out that Jim does not wanna be an alternate, doesn't wanna, he wants his Tuesday nights back, he was a conflicting, in a conflicting schedule, and was happy to be off of ZBA forever after his years of service at the Bay Harbor Court. I did not contact Anthony. So my, anyway, so I, I know Anthony, I don't know Anthony, I've been to enough meetings, I know Anthony, I know Anthony's record, I know Mark's record. They're both good. I think Mark would be my choice for the regular position. He's just extremely dedicated, extremely knowledgeable. He's just one of these people, I talked to him tonight, he said, you know, his attendance is very knowledgeable percent. He's, you know, he takes the responsibility seriously, and plans his schedule around meetings like that. And Anthony, as great as he is, his attendance isn't as good. You know, I think he's a great alternate member, but I might, my choice would be for to move Mark up to a permanent position, and Anthony would be my choice for alternate, since Jim doesn't have a...
We can hear all that, I guess, and maybe you only have a chance to do all this today, but I guess in the future, if you see something, or if you reach out to Stacy, it would help us a lot more.
Yeah, this was the one we were at, 3:30.
Okay. Because, yeah, that would be helpful to know if I remember if this came from candy, or I don't know where the communication, or maybe people turn their mind, but I guess, you talk...
This last minute, I felt I had to get the numbers out, so.
And Mark is definitely eligible to be a regular, if he hasn't served two hundred years.
No, he's only an alternate now.
Currently, okay. I don't have a, do you have any issue with that?
I have no issue with that at all, and I appreciate that you have talked to them and have, you know, better understanding of that. And, you know, who knows, as I say, perhaps he changed, Jim changed his mind.
It's possible. I have a feeling that it might have come from candy, and, you know, I've said it in the past, I don't think that, while I think that as individuals, you know, particularly the first selectman is free to talk to her staff for recommendations all, all she wants, and we are as well, but I think that as a board, we shouldn't be taking recommendations from the staff as to replace a commission, so.
I personally would like to weigh on this, because I appreciate that view, but I disagree. I think staff has to, and I'm sure Mark is wonderful, and, but just to set a precedent here, I like to check in with our staff, who has to work with these people day in and day out. They're just, and also that, there was some thought that typically goes into who, where, why, or conversations, and I wasn't part of those. I just don't feel comfortable moving someone up to a regular that, again, I haven't gotten a chance to talk to, and I think the rationale you presented so far... And I think their rationale you presented so better, excellent, so it probably makes sense. But I think I'd like to just hold off.
No, I think we have a precedent that you talk to people. And I think that it makes sense that you talk to them. But I also agree that I think it makes sense for staff to weigh in. Well, maybe not 100% on everything. But I think it's important that staff, when they work with people, should.
Yeah, but staff, I mean, part of, as you heard Stephen Allen say, you know, one of the responsibilities of the ZBA, it's statutory responsibility, is to listen to appeals and decisions of the zoning enforcement officer. So the zoning enforcement officer really shouldn't have a part in choosing who's gonna be their jury.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
No, I think that, but I mean, I agree, yes. I think it's all our respect for people that.
Well, yeah, like I say, as individuals, I don't think it's, there's anything wrong with you getting recommendations from your staff.
So we can, I would move to table this till the October 20, whatever the next October meeting is.
Yeah, it'll be before the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. That way, because again, you always do talk to people and, you know.
And this time because they were just moving around, I didn't talk to any of them. So.
No, I think that that is a precedent. I don't know.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this until our next October, our next meeting.
Second.
Thank you. All of us in favor? And then Stacy. Can I not have memoed everybody ahead of time? Okay, on to the next same topic, old business discussion, parking options for downtown Mystic. So Jeff, I mean, we have one student in the room. And others, so just to give a little background in case it's relevant. This past June, Chief Jay Del Rosso had held a meeting with community members where he gave an overview for the need to utilize tools such as paid parking to help address issues with parking enforcement in Mystic area as well as other areas of town. We worked on a draft. That was a very preliminary proposal on how this might look in Mystic. This was also based on about three years of work. You know, not to call it Paul, but he was on a stakeholder commission that we put together and starting like 2020. So again, pulling out years of different tidbits and work, this proposal was put together. So on Thursday, we had a really good number of people attend. I didn't count, but it was well over 100. They did make a point to comment during that meeting that it'd be great if people could, you know, stay engaged, engage during the budget process, engage during we have meetings on, you know, mental health. And we have a program really on seniors with isolation and loneliness. And there's just a plethora of issues going on in town that it'd be great to see more community engagement on. But it was really good to see engagement from the community. And then basically we went over the different kind of options, ran through, really was a listening session. So it was listening to people's concerns about the different options, the different potential impacts. You guys were both there, so I mean, you can share your points of view. I think the things I'd like to be sure are clear. I think the Westley son did a good job in their article kind of laying it out. But, you know, it was like, the whole point was to get community engagement. We did take a big extra step of directly mailing letters to anyone potentially impacted. You're gonna have to put pen to paper at some point. And that's when you get feedback, which is really wonderful. To get that feedback, I think the other thing, just since Jesse's still here. You, pretty, not too long ago, pretty recently, the property you were talking about downtown Mystic did start doing pay for parking. Some updates in zoning regulations allowed for that. So they're doing paid parking and the St. Patrick's Church is doing donation parking. Some of the concerns raised, I think we did have at least well thought responses to, such as you were wooden place park. There is, there were options on the table that were under a half mile walk. There was parking pass options for people if they had people visiting their home for any reason. But at the same time, it's understandable how many passes would be enough. There was a lot of complexity regarding, you know, what is an okay distance for employees to walk and what shortages of employees is asking them to walk a certain amount even fair. So there was a lot of, I think, very fair perspectives brought up. And before we talk about kind of next steps, I just wanted to see like your guys' key takeaways, what you think about with the parking issue in particular, but also you want to do this right now for the next meeting or future meeting. Other things that, you know, could be done to get, you know, more, you know, input on future topics, things like that. So either one of you wanna start?
I mean, I can start. I, first of all, I'm gonna say I went to listen. I think it's really important to listen to everyone's comments and ask questions. And I was criticized by the opinion columnist, I wouldn't call him journalist, in the day for not speaking and giving my opinion. But that wasn't the point of the meeting. The meeting was to understand and gather residents, business owners, employees.
And it wasn't a board of staff meeting. And you did a good job. You lived on there. You clarified, you're there speaking as a resident. And you would have been, you don't live down there, you're not as impacted by parking where you are. And you were there to listen, which I think is really amazing that you have local officials who are willing to volunteer their time at night to come and just sit and listen and not talk. If we had more politicians doing that, we might be in a better place. But I digress. But I appreciate that you were there and I think you were very unfairly criticized.
But what I heard is it's not the right plan. Not right now, not that plan. The majority of the people, the vast majority of the people, I mean, nobody liked the plan basically in the straw poll. Maybe one person raised their hand. The majority of the people said not this plan. A number of them thought it would be interesting to continue to study it. But honestly, with regard to continuing the study, I'd like to see that kind of push towards kind of that tourism group more with Heather Summers and Andre and some of our elected officials kind of pushing hard for some solutions rather than taking a lot more staff time on something that it needs more time. It needs more thought. I loved how different people had ideas for intermodal transportation. All of that is great. But the plan as it is, I'm not a figure of it after listening to everybody.
Yeah, I agree with Jeff. I mean, you know, Mystic, I think the residents and the business owners and patrons of businesses in downtown Mystic were heard a lot and clear. And, you know, I think that the people that are most impacted spoke. And it was, wasn't quite unanimous, but I would say it was pretty unanimous that they all want paid parking.
I guess my genuine impression to be right, and we go through this a lot, is like there's always the do nothing option, which, you know, seems like, you know, that was my takeaway, was kind of pause, do nothing. But then there's also, and then there's obviously the, let's move forward with what's on the table or some, you know, version of it. But then like we talked about, there is that middle area that you kind of touched on that was, I feel like the room was kind of split on it. Should we form, I mean, I don't wanna do this, but should we form an ad hoc committee, a task force, if you will, that represents, you know, residents who actually live there, residents of the town, business representative, I don't know what other categories. But to take the, take all the work done and look through it and come up with some type of summary. Because while I appreciate that residents and business owners were saying, nope, like, we don't want this. There aren't necessarily then other solutions on the table outside of parkers. So I also don't wanna create a task force and have them waste their time.
First of all, I, yeah, I'm not surprised. I'm not really in favor of creating another committee.
I'm not either, for the record. I don't wanna do it to service my people who are kind of split.
I think my takeaway from the meeting, and I came to listen to it. You may think that I came in with a preformed opinion. I have my opinions, but I really came to listen to people. And I did my best to get people there, not just people that I agreed with, but people that represented downtown Mystic. And I heard them. And the one concern, the one thing that I think that we do need to work on is enforcement of existing.
Agreed.
Rules. And I think that that's, I think it's really lax. I don't just mean like two hour parking signs. Because that's, I understand, that's a whole different enforcement issue. But no parking zones. And people parking throughout people's driveways. People parking on the sidewalk. I've run a construction site for three years. You know, the new motel on Broadway. There's been construction park, construction equipment parked there every day for the last three years. I complained to the chief of police about it. He makes a call, it's gone. Two hours later, it's back. You know, I say, can you write them a ticket? Oh, no, we don't wanna do that. We're like, you know, just talking to you. Well, he tells them to move it and they're back in two hours. You know, I think that there has to be strong enforcement. And if it's gonna cost us a little bit of money to achieve that, so be it. But I think that if we, you know, we're not gonna create any more parking. I know you say paid parking does theoretically create more parking. Maybe it does, but physically, we're not gonna create any more parking. So we're stuck with what we've got. I think that what we need to do is just address the quality of our issues with people in downtown. And the people that need to park, figure it out if they do. They're just gonna have to figure it out without parking on somebody's lawn or on somebody's driveway or sidewalk.
And, I mean, I was one of the few who supported actually a higher fine than $50.
Yeah, me too.
For enforcement. Because I'd like to see a higher fine. I'd like to see enforcement and a fine that actually might do something. And that also might help support, you know, the community service officers, you know. You know, listening to Lisa Konecki about Westerly, would that work for us? I don't know.
It's one way, one way to go.
Yeah.
It's a different option.
Yeah, I think it's hard for them to do enforcement when it's just a 20, was just a $25 ticket and there's no legal ramification for local enforcement. That they, it's not like if it's a state ticket, they can eventually suspend their license.
Well, they say the second, the second ticket.
They can go to state.
Yeah.
So it's, I think it is challenging. So I think just to be careful, I don't wanna misunderstanding. Even though the room was kind of split and obviously there's no time to look at this. You guys think for now, not, like, don't do anything. No special committee will look more into this. Just let it sit, talk about enforcement.
Yeah, let you talk more with the chief and with the board of commissioners about possible enforcement.
Yeah. And see how that goes maybe for this year. But not forgetting the people that have ideas about the intermodal transportation. I mean, if there's opportunities for that.
No, I think we'll have ideas. I'd love to see some way that those ideas can be shared. Like you.
No, no, I mean, you've never turned on a proposal for a bus.
Yeah.
It just hasn't worked.
Yeah. And I think it's a fair point that some people raised where I think we were thinking, well, ahead of it, like, if you want to incentivize the intermodal, you need to find a way to not make coming right to downtown and parking right there so attractive and encourage them to park further away. But maybe we first need that, like Debbie said with the state. I don't know if we'll be able to get it, but at least we're meeting and talking. We actually have a meeting tomorrow again, so I'll bring this up. But to talk about their support for whether it's a trolley or kind of support our efforts with the water taxi, but to get and move people around. And then if it's still not working, then maybe people will wanna relive it someday or maybe they won't. And maybe it's fine. I did wanna address some of Jesse's points though with the property. Seaport Marine, right, Seaport Marine property. Is that they're doing it as a private property owner. There are like inter lot municipal agreements that have been looked at and could be on the table. I think what's, and I don't wanna speak for you guys, but I think where we've been in the past with ourselves, with the Board of Finances, local residents don't wanna pay for visitor parking. So they don't, which I completely understand, they don't want to pay to build any sort of garage. They don't wanna pay to offer free parking for other people, especially if it's right in downtown. I think there is something to be said if you're keeping cars away from downtown and not fogging up 27. But they don't wanna pay any local money to help with that. So that's why we really need the private sector. And they're willing to do it. It's, you know, $20, it's, you know, more expensive. But more visitors might be, have been willing. I forgot he shared some of the.
Yeah, $3,600.
Yeah, so then they have people coming. So hopefully that will help alleviate some. And then St. Patrick's donation hopefully will help alleviate some. So I think, you know, it's a fair thing to say, let's give it some time and see what happens.
Can I respond to that?
It'd be informal, but.
It seems to me that the Seaport Marine property, as I mentioned, is just ideal. I mean, it's sitting there, it's in a flood zone. It's gonna be very difficult for anybody to develop it beyond what it basically is, which is a flat lot. Any attempts to develop it in the past has been rejected or withdrawn. So it's basically a rent pairing for the person who owns it. And right now it's generating no income whatsoever. I would think that this would be something that you really should seriously look at. It solves all the problems. It can also have a launch ramp for boats.
Jeffy, I think they're just not, I don't even, they're doing parking there on their own. They're already, we're not, I'm not ever gonna ask residents to pay money. That is a very, as I understand, a valuable lot. It is in a flood zone. There's still a lot they can do there. They could sell it to a private developer and there would be things there. So I think it's pretty amazing they're holding on to it and trying to do something good for the community. They do have an active Marina there. So I just, you know, there have been calls for eminent domain. That would not even be legally possible. I know you're not saying that, but it's been out there. So for the record, I wanna say there's gonna be no eminent domain of that lot. And then, you know, I think the millions and millions and millions of dollars we would have to be putting up to make that a municipal free lot would just be off the table for taxpayers. So I think the fact that they have been willing to even step up and do it on their own, you know, is alleviating some of the problem.
Hasn't been suggested to them at all. And they might have a subject or an opinion of it all for the owners.
They are, and he's telling me, he said they've been right to work, but they've been really positive trying to be a help on all this. But they do have a viable fitness down there. And they are stepping up by offering paid parking right now. They have paid parking down there. So they are doing it.
And I think DDP would have a strong opinion about taking marine commercial property and water dependent use.
Well, again, those are all the reasons why you can't do something. I look at a problem from the standpoint of how it can be solved. Can is not really part of my vocabulary. Can do is part of my vocabulary.
That is a good attitude. All right, so we'll keep, so anything else you guys wanna say on parking?
Not this point. I think we, you know, as I said, we talked to the chief about the enforcement and options and kind of start there.
Well, thank you very much for the, for the wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
And thank you to Paul Sarter, who's here, who did a fabulous job facilitating that.
Paul stepped in when he realized that I was gonna try and run a media day. Don't do it at the same time.
Of course, it's brass, it's hard.
He stepped in day of to help facilitate a 100 plus people meeting. Real thank you, Paul.
I completely concur. I talked to a lot of people and I completely concur with your conclusion, for what it's worth.
Thank you. Well, thanks, guys. And again, especially those of you who have a hole of getting people to attend meetings. If you can get them to budget meetings, that impacts people's everyday life in this town in such big ways. I don't know if you have ideas of how to make it more relevant or maybe it's not communication style. But the budget thing always really stands out to me as a place where it'd be great to get more engagement. So we can go on to charter. Charter is very exciting, although. So as a quick update, I attended the Board of Finance meeting last week to discuss the financial impact if we move into phase two of the charter, which as a reminder was about $40,000. Basically, after, I think, a very healthy discussion, they, we all kind of came to the same place was why don't we wait the election? I think it was actually right before their, like, the day before their meeting, if they still have it, because they would. So they could, let's just wait and see the outcome of the actual charter vote and then have a discussion if they, you know, want to allocate it. And then at our next November meeting after that, we can discuss if we do in fact wanna open it. And I would say just on a straw poll, lack of a better term, they seem pretty split in terms of let's just do it and get it done and let's just fix it. And being like, is it that important? You kind of did the big stuff, maybe we should just leave it. So it was a healthy discussion. And maybe, you know, we can kind of put, you can put together your points of view on it or we can have a joint meeting of the Board of Finances, talk about charter. So we can look at things in November if that's time for you to wait.
Yeah, that's how we talked about last week or the last time we discussed.
Just waiting for the election makes total sense. Because who knows how it's gonna come out?
I wish we could, I better be able to talk about the charter too. Okay, so new bid, award a bid sidewalk improvement and repair. The Public Works gave us a summary noting, after reviewing bid documents and meeting with the company to review goals for sidewalk improvements, they are recommending that the person that actually was the lowest bidder upon construction to be awarded the project in the amount of $135,550 for sidewalk improvements and repairs at various locations throughout town. Do I hear a motion to award the bid for sidewalk improvements and repairs to Ponce Construction in the amount of $135,550?
So.
Certainly.
Any discussion?
No, I know they've worked very hard on this.
They still don't turn up. And the Board of Finance did approve it at their last meeting also. Anything else?
No.
All of us in favor?
All right.
I'm motioning, Gary. We need to officially set our meeting schedule for 2025. It has to be by the town clerk and secretary of state. Could I get in? Could I get a motion to approve the 2025 meeting schedule, which Stacy already went through to check, the room was available the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, that's going to the Police Department at 5:30.
So moved.
In a second. Any more discussion on this one? All those in favor? I'm motion carried. Okay, we have a request for a, now annual request from the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce for use of the grassy area at the town dock for the lobster trap tree. This time will be November 18th, 2024 through January 6th. Could I get a motion to approve the use of the town dock grassy area by the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce from November 18th, 2024 through January 6th, 2024 for the lobster trap tree?
So moved.
Twenty five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Get back on top of it. All of, I'm sorry, can I get a motion?
Yes, so moved, for 2025.
Yeah, discussion is one, wondering, I know this is an event that we've been doing for a while, but has this gone before waterfront commission?
I don't know if it already has, but that is definitely in their list when they, when anybody asks for the town dock area, they're told they need to get in touch and get on waterfront commission.
I've been going with means, I haven't, I could have missed one.
Yeah, it could be on their one, but I think they canceled their one for this one.
No, they have one this one, they could have, well, back in the summer, they could have done it.
Yeah, it'd probably be usually around the same time that it comes to our board, and then also Police Commission, but I believe, if you want to check with them.
No, I mean, I'll, I'll vote for it this time, but next time, I just want to make sure that it goes to them, that it's just there.
So just to be fair on that, so would your recommendation be to be sure?
Goes to them first.
First, before it comes out.
Because once we, once we approve it.
We can approve it though, with the caveat that they have to approve it.
Which maybe we should do.
I guess it's always been the informal understanding.
Yeah, I would prefer, I mean, having dealt with events in the park in Mystic, we finally come to an understanding, there was actually the chief's idea, the reunion suggested, but now when, when the chamber comes to the board of police commissioners for approval for an event on Cathol Street, the chief made it clear that they have to first bring it to the Park Commission before the board of police commissioners. So, because, you know, we don't necessarily talk, the Park Commission doesn't necessarily talk to the board of police commissioners, so they want to know that it's been approved, and I think in this case, where the waterfront commission has jurisdiction over that property, they should, they should sign off on that.
I can talk to them and talk to see if there was maybe some unintended consequences.
But like I said, for this time, at this 11th hour, I'm perfectly fine with approving it.
All those in favor? And thank you to the Ocean Community, it's great, it's a ton of work. And then, that's not enough for them, they then go on to their next one. So we also got a request from the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce for use of Donahue Park for the Starry Lights Art Exhibition. Could I get a motion to approve the use of Donahue Park by the Ocean Community Chamber of Commerce from December 1st, 2024 to January 31st, 2025, for the Starry Lights Art Exhibit?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that one?
Again, though, yeah, same thing, the waterfront commission does have jurisdiction, they have to, it's all the commission.
Yes, which I think they've never, we've had a recent meeting, they've never really been involved there.
They do, they do mention Donahue Park once in a while, but that's about the extent.
I'm sorry, that there. Okay, perfect. All those in favor? Motion carried. We need to get out of here. Okay, we're down to comments for the segment, which we need to get out of here. We can go quick. Just to know for the record, the next board of six meeting is going to be at October 23rd, I wish I could scroll down earlier, at Town Hall, because this room is going to start being used for early voting. So there will be any typical meeting that's in this room is going to be moved, so definitely check the town website, because this will be used for early voting. Basically, most, the rest of, pretty much towards the end of October, the November, 14 days ahead of the election. Right, do you want to start with anything?
Yeah, just a couple real quick updates. One is, I was on the call this week with the updates for the Mystic Roadhouse Park.
Okay, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I mean, it's important to get the updates, because I keep asking the same questions. So in theory, they were going, they're hoping to go up to bid next week.
But has DECD signed yet?
The problem is, once again, DOT had more issues and didn't give them a final approval, but they think they're kind of down to the wire, it's just a couple things. They got approval from the Army Corps, but not DEEP. DEEP is waiting for the Army Corps, so they expect that the DEEP approval, Department Environmental Protection, sorry. Should be forthcoming soon. So.
They have to wait for that.
They have to wait for that, but their timeline is hoping in the next week or so to be ready to go up for bid. And then they have to update now the demolition permit because it has expired in the time that we're waiting, but Molly's going to go talk to building about that. Because I said, when, you know, when are we going to finally see something? And it could be as early as December if they truly do go up to bid.
Did, I'm sorry, and I, and thank you for stepping on, it's probably a big weekly check-in call, and I can go.
And I have my notes, some of them are certainly.
No, it's nice, and I haven't gotten to do, I do my check-in with Molly tomorrow, but did DECD approve the RFP package, like, are they that far along, or not even, did they mention that?
They didn't mention that, and I had been under the assumption that they had approved it, but I could be wrong on that. That was not on their list, that they went through, they were going through the other agency permits, which is why I had.
This is not a permit, just an approval for the grant.
Yeah, I knew that they had to see it, but I had the impression that they already saw it, but I could be wrong on that, so definitely check with Molly.
Thank you. I do, were they close, but it's like every time you get closer, there's other.
Yeah, oh, it's so frustrating.
Like the details, but it's good, I mean, it's getting close.
It's getting there, it's just, and Molly was saying that hopefully there's two more grants that were waiting towards the end of November, if you hear on, so that would be very helpful if it came in. And the other thing, I did speak to Molly and Jim, and I noticed about was the Millet Valena application, my friend, yeah, and generally, the ones that I could comment on make sense, except I was concerned about the affordable housing issue to make sure that they were indeed going to do the 20%, which is what the ECD is looking for, and based on kind of back and forth with Molly today, it does it that way, but that's, they need to sign up on that, so. Other than that, I thought the environmental part, you know, that they're doing, it makes sense, this is the next step. They did the assessment, now the remediation, and it's a reasonable program that they're looking for, so.
What's about part figure, and what they need to remediate during the year?
I haven't heard of part figure, remediation's very expensive, I can tell you that. So this grant.
Even though most of it would be cash, yes.
Yeah, the, the cost of capping is, is more than you would think it would be. I mean, the good news is a lot of it, because I've reviewed the plans that I've met with the LDP, that's, that's working on it. A lot of it is, it's doable, it isn't like.
We're talking millions?
Yeah, yeah, you're always talking about millions.
Several millions or a couple millions?
In the lower millions, not like in the hundred millions, but I don't know the exact cost, but that's pretty typical. I think that's it, and the only other thing I did want to remind people about in some October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, that has breast cancer survivors, and obviously to highlight that for people, so.
Thank you. Ben?
No, I don't have any. I mean, I'll be quick, I read everything, so filling off that. We had a few different people who wanted to participate in the Terry Froder Breast Cancer Foundation Walk, and next year is on highlight their 20 year anniversary, so it'd be nice to get a bigger Stonington team maybe together. That was on Saturday in Waterford, then Sunday in Waterford, we have the Safe Futures Walk, which was really wonderful, the superintendent participated, a number of other people. I think we again want to have a bigger showing, showing it that next year, but it was really touching, they had survivor speak, it was reminding people about, you know, the importance of education and engagement, and, you know, there's a lot of stigma still around domestic violence and the importance of talking about it. So two really important events, and those great different communities coming together all across kind of southeastern Connecticut. Then also, just on the topic of mental health, tomorrow at 4:30 at Swallow Park, they're going to do our kind of first community, world mental health day, kind of run walk, there'll be pizza and water, if anybody wants to come, it'll start at 4:30, and then kind of just go from there, just a mile, just some resources, just be outside, can always use help sharing things, you never know, it's hard to get on people's radar. I got to attend on Tuesday, every week, our human services team, sometimes with or without, police also participate in different nonprofits in the area, do this homeless outreach meeting. I was able to sit in and participate on Tuesday, it's really amazing what they've done, and talking, there's people from New London, from Westridge, from Norwich.com, how they really want to replicate the model that Stonington is doing, and it really is, it's like case management, they review people's names, they're able to say, oh, this person, we know, we've gotten a lot of calls about a gentleman who's a Mystic homicide of the road, just as an example, they would say, yep, he came from X town, we know him, you know, be able to go through things about him, what types of approaches, you know, some clergy who comes, so this, you know, if someone does connect with religion, they'll go out and meet with them. The police have been wonderful, it's just really great, they've had some success stories of getting people into their housing or into treatment facilities, depending on their needs. There's some really hard, sad stories, there's, you know, a veteran who's going through chemo and homeless and get weightless everywhere, and it's living in a car, and it's hard, it's very, like, these people deserve so much credit for the kind of work they're doing, it's pretty amazing, on very little resources, so just a big thank you to that team and for all the work that they're doing. And then today, I just came out from Hartford, we released our At Risk Youth Report for the 119K Commission. It will hopefully be well received by the state, it's really, if you are interested, I'd encourage you to read it, it's online, as of today, it runs through a lot of different areas, a potential focus for the state, there's over 119,000 youth that are deemed to be at risk, and there's a plan for reconnecting them, and if, they, they go through numbers, figures, returns on investment, it's, I think, you know, really well done by all those involved, and all the speakers were actual youth, which I think was very wonderful, instead of hearing from politicians and from, you know, other people, they had only youth speak, and they were just so amazing, and so poignant, and so many different perspectives, ranging from, I think, one of them's probably under 12 to 24 years old, and it was just, it was really touching, and some really great work there, so I'd say people should definitely check in on that, and there's a lot, a lot of things going on, so I just say, like, to anyone listening, engage, reach out, get in touch, if you have ideas or feedback, we're, we're here, and then probably the next meeting I'll have some budget SIP updates for you guys, as we get ready for that.
So it seems more.
Anything else? You can stand adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.